I'd like to call to order the June 19th to 2014 meeting of the City of Bellingham Planning Commission and ask everyone to silence all electronic devices. So if you've got something that whirs, buzzes, bangs, whistles, put it on silent running or shut it off, please. Heather, would you call the roll?
Tom Brinstad.
Here.
Jeff Brown.
Here.
Garrett O'Brien.
Here.
Phyllis McKee.
Here.
Sarice Noah is absent. Steve Crooks.
Here.
Holly Taiyi.
Here. Thank you. First item on the agenda tonight is approval of previous meetings' minutes. Minutes for April 17th, May 15th, and June 12th were submitted for approval. I trust that everybody's had a chance to review them and we'll take them in order. So is there a motion for the April 17th minutes?
My move to approve is written.
Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the April 17th minutes. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Uh, May 15th, we need a motion for that.
So moved.
Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the May 15th minutes. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And June 12th, do we have a motion for that?
So moved.
Seconded.
It's moved and seconded that the June 12th minutes be approved as written. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Next on the agenda is the public comment period, and that's where the commission gives the public essentially three minutes to come before us and speak about anything you want other than the topic of tonight's meeting. So if you want to talk about Great Wales, or I don't know, howdy doody, three minutes, your chance at fame is here. Are there any takers? Nope, seeing none, we'll close that portion of the, uh, of the meeting. In, in our time, I think we've only had one or two people take advantage of that. I just, well, I can't say anything. I didn't take advantage of it either when I was just in the public. Okay, next is a public hearing, and it's a public hearing on two requests to docket amendments for the Bellingham Municipal Code and, um, comprehensive plan in the 2014-2015 period. And I want to make this kind of clear, so Lisa, would you tell us exactly what this docketing process means, so I can get it through my thick Norwegian skull?
Mr. Chairman, actually, I'll do that. My name is Greg Ock, and I'm from the Planning Department. With me tonight is Lisa Poole, also from Planning. So procedural comments. Amending our comprehensive plan, including the neighborhood plans, is a, has two major steps. The first step is deciding which of the proposals we should even review, and that's called docketing. And that's what we're doing tonight. That's what the commission is doing tonight. So you take a look at these two proposals, evaluate them against the docketing criteria, and then you provide a recommendation to the City Council whether or not we should even review these over the next year. The second part of the docketing process is the council will also hold a public hearing. I don't know if we have a date.
July.
The 2nd July meeting, and they'll hold a public hearing, and they'll consider the public's testimony, your recommendations, staff's recommendations, and they'll decide which, if either of these proposals should be reviewed in the, in the following year. So that's the docketing process. We establish which of the proposals should even be reviewed, should even go through the process. The second step is when the fun really begins, and that's, uh, once the docket is set, then any proposals that are docketed comes back to the Planning Commission. You hold a public hearing and review the proposal on the merits. So you'll decide at that point whether or not, actually, you'll make a recommendation at that point, whether or not these requests should be approved. So whether or not the comprehensive plan should be amended and the zoning should be changed. You'll make that recommendation. You'll probably hold that meeting sometime before the end of the year, probably this fall and maybe in the winter. And then, once your review is completed, it goes again to City Council. They'll hold a hearing on the merits of the proposals, and ultimately, the council will decide, probably in the spring, summer of next year, whether or not these should be approved and the zoning should be changed. So we've got two major steps. This is the first step. This is the docketing part. This is where we decide which of these proposals, if either, should actually go through the amendment, the formal amendment process. Is that what you were envisioning?
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Ock.
Okay, with that, I'll turn it over to Lisa. She'll provide the staff report.
Before they start, I'd like to...
Questions?
No, I'm gonna formally recuse myself from process. I'm involved in both of these docketing proposals, so I'm gonna step out and leave it to you guys, and if someone could come get me when, when that section of the meeting's done, I'll just be on the hallway. Thank you.
I'm Lisa Poole, Senior Planner with the Planning and Community Development Department. As Greg stated, tonight, we are establishing the docket. Under the Growth Management Act, the comprehensive plan, which includes neighborhood plans, can be amended only once a year. And so this is that process, to establish that list of amendments that we will further review through a separate legislative process. So step one's establishing the docket. Step two is analyzing the proposals, once again, with the public hearings through Planning Commission and City Council. I just wanted to highlight the review criteria in the Bellingham Municipal Code, 20.20.030. This is the criteria that you use, that staff uses, that you use, to review the amendments that were submitted. They must meet criteria A, and they also must meet one or more of the criterion under B. This is just, that list continued on. As Greg stated, we did receive two applications for amendments. I'll just briefly touch on them. The first one, they are both in the Samish neighborhood, and the first one is in the Samish neighborhood in Area 1, along Ashley Street, and this request is to rezone the property from commercial auto to commercial plan. And what that does is it opens up the property to the full list of uses under the commercial planned zoning district. And staff finds that this proposal does meet the docketing criteria, and we're recommending approval for this. The next item is, as I stated, in the Samish neighborhood, and this is in Area 9. This is currently zoned commercial planned with the non-retail use restriction on it, and the request is to remove that non-retail restriction and open it up to the full list of uses in the commercial planned zoning district. And so staff is recommending approval as well for this application, with the condition that this small piece of property right here, that was not included in the application, be included with the rezone application when it comes forward, so that we have a clean Area 9 here. Currently, that piece is owned by the Elks Lodge, and the applicant is working with the Elks Lodge in, in finance, and if they'd like to be included. And this is just a map showing you where the two applications are in relation to one another. The Ashley Street application is further up north, and then the application that's south of the Elks Lodge is right along here. I did want to address a few of the public comments regarding the Ashley Street proposal. The applic, the application did come in after the April 1st deadline, and that was due to miscommunication between staff and the applicant. We have worked with our city attorney and determined that it's, it's legal to have, to take in that application after, after the April 1st deadline. So we want full disclosure that that's the case, and council ultimately will determine if this application will be approved. And then also, for both of the applications, the property owners have stated that AVT Consulting and Scott Swanson can act on their behalf in representing them for these applications. So we wanted to go ahead and address those. So with that, that concludes my presentation.
Are there questions or concerns from the commission first? There are only two persons who signed up to speak, Dick Conneboy and Ron Judd. So, oh, excuse me. That's right, Scott needs to talk. He's...
I, I can go now, or I can wait if you want. I didn't sign up because I represent the applicants. Do you want me to go ahead and briefly present? I'll start with the zoning, the Z-O-N-T-O 2014-005 docket request, which is the Ashley Street docket request. I did submit a letter, so I'll just briefly summarize what I addressed in those letters. Generally, there's two, two issues I wanna, I wanna discuss in relation to this application. The first is, you know, we're discussing, I thought staff did a good job of discussing the docketing process. At this time, you're, you're just asked to make a determination on whether this should be docketed. This means are the criteria met. We would support staff's both recommendation on docketing and agree with the, uh, what they put in the staff report in terms of, of docketing. This is, you know, the current zoning's been here for over 30 years without any attempt to develop, and it really is a, a prime, prime parcel for infill. The second issue that needs a bit of discussion is regarding the timing of the application. You would've seen some of that in the materials, and Lisa did address that. I just wanted to expand on that a little further. The Growth Management Act dictates, you know, what you have to do, and it only requires that all proposals be considered at the same time. Beyond that, you know, the requirements are up to the city in terms of, you know, how they're allowed and as long as they're batched together. This ensures, you know, consistency in comprehensive planning with cumulative effect of changes being considered. The Growth Management Act requires that comp plan and development regulations be consistent. That way, with everything being batched together, you can analyze what's being proposed and make sure everything's consistent with everything, with, with, you know, and along with the zoning changes. So everything that's required by the Growth Management Act is happening now. The language of the city ordinance says "should," which, you know, indicates it's not mandatory. The city attorney's office has also weighed in. Under the circumstances, you know, this allows the city to provide flexibility, which they're doing here. So that's about all I have to add. I appreciate your consideration. I'm happy to answer any questions. I'm only gonna just comment that I, with regards to the second proposal, I'm gonna shift now to the, um, the one with 0004. In that one, I think the same issues apply, which is, you know, the docketing criteria have been met. There's the issue of the small parcel, and as Lisa pointed out, you know, we don't object to it being included. We've reached out to the Elks Club. They, at this point, are, are aware and, and they've, they're gonna make a final decision now, but they are not objecting to it at this point. They just wanted to understand it a little bit more before they made a final decision on what they want to do. And at this point, so, that's it. I'm happy to take any questions anybody might have, but thank you.
Anybody have any questions for him? Don't see any.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay. As I said, only two signed up to speak, Richard Conneboy and Ron Judd, so if they would come forward, first Dick.
Good evening. My name is Dick Conneboy. I live at 165 South 46th Street, just up the hill from the Ashley property, which is one I'm primarily gonna speak to tonight. First of all, I'd like to mention that the, the City Council's gonna be hearing this on the 21st. I got the notice on the 18th, although the notice is dated on 19th. I'm not sure how that happens, but... And it may be a short night, because I also noticed on the website that the, there's already a draft response from the Planning Commission to the City Council, so fill in the blanks. The Ashley property, uh, with respect to the criteria that are specified in the Bellingham Municipal Code, and I submit that this rezone does not meet those criteria. I've mentioned some of these points in the materials that I've already submitted to you, but I'd like to go, go over them tonight for those who are in the audience who might not have read it, or people who are gonna watch this on, on BT, TV 10, or the video that'll later be on the city website. I submit that this rezone will violate the express requirement of the GMA to maintain the character of neighborhoods. In 2004, the Samish neighborhood opposed the rezone of this possible, parcel to residential multifamily, at which time the developer wanted to place a 60-plus unit apartment building with over 100 parking spaces. Even with the rejection of this poorly planned development, in the intervening decade, the neighborhood has already begun to deteriorate, with the percentage of owner-occupied homes on 41st, 42nd, 43rd, and 44th Street, as well as the adjacent homes on Byron and Consolidation, falling to about 66% as the original owners continue to flee the problems with noise, parking, parties, and overcrowding. Four single-family homes opposite, that's on the east side of Ashley, the proposed rezone parcel, were built in 2002 and rapidly, rapidly became annual rentals, and usually containing a minimum of four or five renters in violation of the other BMC that limits rentals to three or few, fewer unrelated persons. Cars, noise, and trash are the order of the day there. It's too bad that you can't walk the area today and see what it looks like during the school year. Any proposed apartment complex on the parcel the applicant wishes to rezone will not attract couples or small families, given the surroundings. And this was maintained by the people in 2004, that this was going to attract young couples and, and families. I, I highly doubt whether any of them in approaching this place, if it isn't in the summer, will determine this is a great place to, a great place to live, given the surroundings and the students who will ultimately inhabit the place. In fact, the further concentration of young university students will aggravate the current situation and most certainly promote the further decline of the immediate neighborhood with the addition of dozens and dozens of automobiles, increased traffic, street parking noise, and other disturbances. And this was also mentioned in 2004 and was dismissed by the staff, saying there are city codes and enforcement that can be brought to bear on this. And any of you who've been here any time and any amount of time in Bellingham are aware that enforcement of certain codes, especially dealing with, with parties and overcrowding or whatnot, are simply not enforced or enforced very poorly. Circumstances have indeed changed, and for the worse, during the last decade, and this rezone will further exacerbate a worsening situation. The rezone would in fact result in a further deterioration of a neighborhood already beset by an increasing number of rentals and the concomitant problems that these rentals produce. Long-term benefit could possibly be a result of development of this parcel is restricted to housing types found under the Bellingham Municipal Code Infill Toolkit. The city's been fighting like hell to get the infill toolkit in some of these developable areas within our neighborhoods. This is a prime place for, for that, and I would like to see perhaps the city push for that. This area, it would be ideal for transitional housing, such as cottages, duplexes, or triplexes, and would meet the city's desire to have the developers begin these housing types, as I said. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Dick. Next is Ron Judd.
Ron Judd, I live at 817 Samish Way. My home is sort of just a little bit north and across the street from the Samish Way property near the Elks Club. It's clear to me from reading the materials from the staff that the docket, and I understand that this hearing is specifically about the docketing of this change, and it looks to me like that horse has left the barn and that the relatively low bar to get this on the docket has been cleared. But I wanted to just speak briefly about that property and this area to sort of plant a bug in the commission's ear, looking towards your recommendation, which I think you're probably already working on. The materials say that the zoning for this area 30 years ago was designed to provide a buffer between the commerce of Samish Way and Lincoln and the residential area along Samish. I live along Samish Way. That's kind of like my front driveway slash raceway. But it looks to me like that zoning at that time was appropriate, and it's worked. There is a buffer zone there. It's an unusual area, a mix of undeveloped property, two churches, an Elks Club, various fields, and the potential is always there for development. Obviously, I'm not a NIMBY person. I expect that those places will be filled with infill at some point. But I think there's different kinds of infill, and what I see is along that strip of land below Ridgemont, between Ridgemont and Samish Way, infill is happening there naturally. It's happening with people who have been longtime residents along Samish, back when it was a little cow trail, selling their property. Somebody's coming in and putting three houses where they were one. I live in one of those houses. I'm infill, standing here. I lived, I moved here 12 years ago. And I've talked to my neighbors about this, and people appreciate the fact that there is a buffer. Especially, they appreciate it when we see the activity that's happening to the north, including this other project, and the craziness that's coming about directly there. And I see this part of Samish Way as an extension of that, not of Samish Way on the other side of the freeway. So we have concerns specifically about retail. There is no retail anywhere on Samish Way on that side of the freeway. The closest retail to my house is eight tenths of a mile north. It's a latte stand by the car wash in that area across from the Park and Ride. We've seen apartment buildings go up there with commercial or retail space on the bottom, which I've heard indirectly is sort of what's planned for this property. Those offices, those retail or office spaces, whatever they are at the bottom, have been sitting empty for two years. So we just have a general concern about retail and, as Dick said, character of the neighborhood. It is important to those of us who have bought infill properties in that residential section along Samish Way that there be a buffer between commerce and craziness of downtown Bellingham and where we live along Samish Way. And so we have a specific interest, obviously, in that property, which is directly across from us. It's uniquely situated between two churches. And my, my concern is that once you take the lid off retail in that area, that you leapfrog retail into that buffer, and it's no longer a buffer. And I think that's important to those of us who live here, to have a buffer. So I would just ask that you take that into consideration, and it looks like a small thing to remove a retail restriction, but it adds a lot of uses, not all of which we want to look down and see glaring signs for below our houses. Of course, you know, if it was the appropriate and, and the, the right eating or drinking establishment, we might be swayed, but just kidding. But we are concerned about it, and I just wanted to come and let you know that the people in my little cul-de-sac, which we call jokingly Escrow Heights, is watching this very closely and very concerned about what happens here, and thanks for your attention to it.
Thank you, Ron. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak to the commission before we close the public hearing portion? Yes.
Could we get lights on, please?
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm Keith Miller, and I'm representing the Church of Christ on Samish Way, which is directly across the street from 004 property. And I, I would just agree with the gentleman that just spoke as far as what might go in. I realize this is, sounds premature with a docket control and all that. And sorry for not signing up, but I didn't realize your procedures for having to put my name down somewhere. But anyways, we are concerned more of what does go in there, what the final thing would be. I would probably disagree with him. I don't, I'm not so sure we would want a honky-tonk right next to two churches, but, but nevertheless, is, we'll be looking at this closely, and we appreciate your review of that. I would like to see something in that area more along the lines of homes below there, if anything was going to go in there at all. So appreciate it for the time. Thank you.
Thank you. Someone else? Yeah?
I'm Barbara Best Sire, and we're directly across in the house. We know none of these neighbors. We've been out of the country, and so we haven't been able to really communicate with anybody about what's going on, but we have real concerns. We're the, like, the house that's directly across, part of our property is directly across from this developed area, and so we're very concerned about what's going to go in there, and would like to have the opportunity to talk to people and, you know, get clear about what that would mean for us and what kinds of businesses they're actually thinking about, you know, the retail aspect of it. So offices, to me, doesn't seem to be a problem, but the retail could be. Definitely don't want a honky-tonk or whatever else that he was thinking of, so thank you.
Thank you. One more. Great.
Hi, my name is George Sanders. My address is 4062 Consolidation. I live directly above the first row of houses, directly above the Park and Ride. So this proposed 005 parcel hugely impacts my existence and the neighborhood. I do have some very real concerns about the buildability of that lot. There are some critical areas, and you can see them very well on the LiDAR overlays, on the GIS on the website. You can see those critical areas. So that is, is of, of great concern. The, the character of that small conservation area at the corner of Byron and Ashley, that is one of the last and greatest forest, small forest preserves in the city of Bellingham, and it is ivy-free, and it has been planted with numerous trees on the Trees for Streams program. That is across Ashley, but the development on that sliver of land, most of which is semi, which is 30-degree slope, the power line easement, which we understand we're not supposed to be building close to the power line easement, so that is, it's a very restrictive task to begin with. I would support more of the duplexes as are just up the street from Ashley, and that, when I'm hearing of the toolkit, I'm not familiar with it, but it sounds like that is how we should be infilling our neighborhood. It would be nice had Western Washington University retained that critical area, that slope on the Chuckanut Sandstone Formation, had they retained that as a buffer, an ecological buffer for that neighborhood. It would have been the, probably the most appropriate. We cannot cram more bodies into that postage stamp-sized area. If we could bring this forward for a rezone with some kind of restriction against a big apartment student dormitory complex, I don't want to go over that fight again. We rejected that in 2004, and please do not make us have to take up that fight again for our neighborhood. Certainly would, would support something that I'm hearing about infill toolkits, and the toolkits will match the character of the neighborhood that's there already. I do worry... I do worry, extreme worry, about parking, about the safety of our children at that corner and the school buses, and the impending implosion of the single-family nature of our neighborhood. And we can get, we've, we already see in five houses at the corner, a critical mass of partying students, and we know what will happen. So please keep us protected through this, through this process of attempting to rezone. Thank you.
Thank you, George. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? Please come on down.
Good evening. My name is Randy Sanders. I also live at 4062 Consolidation Avenue. And I just wanted to emphasize a point that my husband touched on, which is the traffic that is on Ashley. There is no sidewalk or curbing beyond the houses that exist already on the south end of that street. And so, the children and the students of the university who walk along that road have to be very cautious. When the weather's bad, it's very difficult, especially with snow, to stay off the road and have secure footing. The school buses that go through there, again, need to have as much room as they can. Any building that is done on that lot would increase traffic unless it were something in the nature of duplexes. And so I would strongly speak to any development. The only thing that I would be in favor of is a development that would maintain the very minimum increase if there would be any to traffic on that street. Thank you.
Thank you. One more.
Good evening. My name is Don Hale. I live at 936th Street in Ridgemont, just up the hill from the Samish rezone. I have to conclude that Ron's comments that there's a natural buffer that was established quite a while ago really makes sense to us, and I don't want a rezone, and I recommend that we don't go that way. And then on Ashley, that's a mess there. And we just saw that with the development at the top of Consolidation that didn't go through. It's a mess. That traffic coming down Ashley is killer. The auto zoning that is there is very possibly still able to be used as the original zoning. It's just a real odd piece of property for that, for anything, for anything. And that's why it hasn't been, it hasn't been used yet. That's how I feel about it. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Yes.
Hi, my name is Craig Best-Sire, and I live at 811 Samish Way, which is directly across the street from the proposed resort. And what I see is we have a corridor from I-5 exit all the way through the Samish area almost to Lake Patton. And bringing in a commercial entity, which I have no idea what they planned for that property, would include, I would assume, commercial signs like they have on Samish Way, which is kind of becoming a slum in a way. So I would think that extending it on our side of the freeway where we have a residential area, we're going to be looking right directly at commercial signs and whatever else as far as the, how they develop that thing, I'm not sure. And it's a high, high-traffic area as well, because I like to go over to get my mail and paper in the mornings, so it's, I have to wait a bit sometimes, so I'll take that into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. Is there anyone else who wishes to comment? Okay, we'll close the public comment period. Staff, do you have anything more that you want to add?
Just quickly, thanks to everyone for coming out. I know this is kind of confusing because we're really not here to talk about the merits of the proposal and what do we do about traffic and parking and all of that. Those are, those are issues that are discussed. If the, if the proposal gets docketed, then we go through the process, and those are the kinds of issues that we look at as staff, that the applicant has to address, and that ultimately you and the council decide whether or not this should be approved. So, issues like appropriate uses on the property, like I said, traffic impacts, parking issues, critical areas, and neighborhood character are all things that we, that we talk about and analyze once these things, if they do get put on the docket, that's part of the process. So, I know it's a little confusing for folks, but that's the way our system works at this point. We're only, we're only talking about whether or not we should actually even review these proposals at this time, so. Did you have anything?
Greg, I got a question on the Area 9. So the, what's the logic again, just by adding that property with the, I guess it's the Elks Club property, is just because that's the only portion of property that's, it would be kind of isolated, is that the idea?
Correct. You have that small sliver of property with the unique zoning. So, the applicants talk with the Elks Club. They're deciding whether or not they want to be part of this, or they may even want to have the property, that sliver rezoned to what the rest of their property is, which is residential. We're not sure at this point. It doesn't make sense to leave them out, so we're hoping that they'll come to a decision before council reviews this, so that when we do, if it does get docketed, we know exactly what, what we're dealing with, and we have the approval of the Elks Club to go ahead.
Once it, once it's docketed, if it's docketed as proposed, can they modify it?
Yeah, the council has the ability to add things to the docket at any time, so.
Or modify the proposal.
Or modify the proposal, which is what we're recommending, yeah.
Any other questions from the commission? Comments, concerns?
No, I'd just like to comment, though, that I think it's, it's very important to make it clear that what Greg is saying is that we're not approving any kind of design at all, but it's probably appropriate to have this up for discussion and move it along for docketing, regardless of which side we may vote on at some point in the future. I mean, this is just giving it out there for discussion, not making any value choices at all.
Thanks. Anybody else? Steve?
Yeah, just quickly, I would like to single out Mr. Conavoie, and thank you personally for timely submission of your comments. It gives us a chance to have them reviewed by staff, to understand both sides of the picture. A lot of times we get folks to come in here, day of, and present a lot of arguments that we just don't, we can't even address. So I really appreciate your, your timely submission of those. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I'd like to move to approve both zoning proposals to be docketed.
Actually, Mr. Chairman, we probably should take separate votes.
Should take separate votes, yes.
Separate votes on each item.
So I move to add zoning 004 to the docket.
Is there a second?
Yes, second.
004, so that's the Area 9.
That's Area 9, next to Sarducci's. I just dated myself, didn't I? It's been moved and seconded that we send recommendation to City Council that Area 00004 be docketed for the coming year. Any more discussion, argument? Fire away, Jeff.
Well, I just, in general, I think philosophically, I'm in favor of docketing things so we can talk about them. And regardless of the merits, it's actually interesting to hear, you know, the infill. We've talked a lot about infill and what's appropriate, and whether it has to be single-family or multifamily or, or those issues, as well as commercial and the overlap with multifamilies. So I think that's a great conversation. I think the only way we can have the conversation is to docket things. So regardless of, I know sometimes people try to kill things from being docketed so there's no discussion. I think the discussion's good, and I would support docketing just pretty much both proposals automatically, just so we can talk about it. Just want to make that point because sometimes they get lost in the noise.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay. It's been moved and seconded that we send forth to City Council recommendation to docket 404. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Do we have a motion on the Ashley Street property?
Moved. A second.
It's been moved and seconded to send to City Council recommendation for docketing the Ashley Street property discussion.
Steve? Real quick, on this piece of property, I was kind of floored here a few seconds ago that someone actually recommended infill for a piece of property. It's, we've never heard that from neighborhoods where they come out and say, "We're in favor of a certain thing down the road." Just an observation, that's not what we're doing here tonight, but I take it under advisement. Thank you.
Yeah, I've looked at this property, or looked at it, I've observed it for a number of years, and it's my feeling that, that the configuration and the topography of the site has been the chief obstacle for it to be developed so far. So perhaps changing the zoning might get a little action on this property, I don't know. Any other discussion? Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we send to council recommendation to docket All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. That concludes the public hearing portion of the meeting, so if the audience wants to leave, you're more than welcome. If you want to stay, please kind of keep it down as you leave. We have some other business for the commission.
We need to retrieve our wayward member.
Yes, and I think Heather just did.
Clear.
Boy, that cleared the chamber.
That's not what I wanted to do. Yeah, it is. Got it. Look at you, all paying attention and ready to go. So as you all know, we're embarking on the comp plan update process, and we are on Monday going to discuss the scope of work, schedule, and the public participation part of the process with the City Council. And so, I wanted to give you all a preview. And so that's what we're doing tonight. This is the high-level overview of the process and the scope, and feel free to stop me, ask questions, provide your thoughts. We'll pass those along to the council if you have any. If you want to take some time and think about it, you're able to do that as well. So just a brief recap, we have to adopt our new plan by mid-year 2016. I know that sounds like a long ways away, but trust me, it's not. It will be here before you know it. The plan has to cover a 20-year planning period, so out to 2036. It has to include new population and employment growth forecasts, which we have those numbers now, the preliminary numbers that were recommended by the City Council and adopted by the County Council. As part of the process, we'll be looking at our urban growth areas and our urban growth boundary, looking at those areas, making sure they're still the areas that we want to grow into an annex eventually. Are those the right areas? Are there other areas that we should add? Are there some areas that are in that we should take out? All of that is part of the process. And then we have the required chapters that have to be in the plan, land use, housing, transportation, parks, capital facilities, and utilities. And then in our plan, we have three chapters that are optional. We have the economic development chapter that was just approved, the environment chapter that was also approved recently, and community design. In terms of the environmental review, Waukesha County is the lead agency for the environmental impact statement that's being prepared. All of the jurisdictions are participating in that process, and we are actually helping to fund it as well. But that environmental review, the draft EIS, is expected to be completed by the end of the year, and then we will supplement that work as need be with transportation modeling work or other environmental work that might be needed. We know the countywide look at traffic is a, is a, is a high-level look. They're mainly looking at major arterials in the county, and so we'll probably need to supplement that with some work on our street system as well, and Public Works is going to do that work for us. In terms of the scope and schedule, we began work on this really last year. We developed a preliminary scope. We approved an inter-local agreement with the county and the other cities to jointly fund some consultant work to develop the population and employment growth forecasts. We've been working with the county on the land capacity analysis. That's the look at our current land supply, the vacant land, and how much capacity, given existing zoning, existing environmental regulations and so forth, how much capacity we estimate is available on that remaining vacant and underutilized land. The county does the analysis, they do it countywide, they use the same methodology everywhere. We're part of that process. We review the results, we make suggestions on changes, we look at it almost parcel by parcel to say, "Hey, it doesn't make sense over here to take out this land," or "This land we know has wetlands even though it doesn't show up on the map, and so we're not going to get as much capacity there as what's, what you might think." So that's an iterative process, and we continue to work with the county to make sure we have the most accurate information that we can have. I mean, it's all, you know, it's all speculative in that we're forecasting what's going to happen on a piece of land. We don't know for sure, but we do the best we can with the information that we have, and we look, develop capacity numbers so that we can compare. Here's the growth that we've said we want to accommodate, here's the capacity that we have on the remaining lands, how do those numbers match up? And if they don't match up, what are we going to do about that? That's all part of the process as well. We started looking through the chapters of the current plan, just marking up outdated information, things that are no longer need to be in there and so forth. We also meet four times a year with a, with a group of elected officials from each of the jurisdictions, all of the cities in Waukesha County, just to apprise them on the work that's going on, here's what we're doing, here's how we're working together, here's the results so far. That group is, we'll meet four times this year and throughout the process. We have two council members and the mayor who are part of that, part of that group. This year, we, council, as I said, will approve the scope and schedule, public participation plan, hopefully next plan, hopefully next Monday. They may take some time with it, I don't know. We've got, as I said, approved preliminary population and employment growth forecasts and we know the numbers that we're dealing with at this point. We expect the land capacity analysis numbers to be fairly complete soon. We need to then compare those numbers, as I said, and look at potentially, are there adjustments that we need to make to the urban growth area boundary? That's work that you all will get to help us with. As I said, the environmental work and the transportation modeling work will go on this year as well. We'll begin sketching out potential new chapters and again, meeting this year periodically with the elected officials group. Your work will primarily begin this fall when we look at UGA issues and then better block out 2015 for lots of meetings. In 2015, the environmental review will be complete early in the year. We'll have drafts of new comp plan chapters and you'll begin your review process. The way the timeline is sketched out, we're going to give you about six months to review those seven or eight chapters that you need to take a look at. So you're going to have to be efficient, you're going to have to probably schedule extra meetings. It'll be up to you to decide how you want to work your way through it. And council adoption, as I said, in 16 by mid-year. So in terms of the staff recommendation, our basic premise is that our current comp plan is working pretty well. It's a good document, it provides a lot of policy direction for decision-makers and for staff to use. We don't feel like there's any need to reinvent the wheel. We're going to be updating, not redoing, okay? Most of, many of the current plans, goals and policies are still relevant and appropriate. We're going to go through those chapters and look at those goals and policies with a critical eye, figure out which ones are actually providing guidance for staff, for planning commission and council, and which ones are not. It's sort of like cleaning out your garage. If you haven't used it in the last 10 years, you probably don't need it. Same thing with some of the goals and policies in the plan. If we haven't used them, we haven't given them to you, if they haven't provided, if they're not providing any real guidance, then they're probably just cluttering things up. And, you know, do we really need to have 200 policies in our land use chapter? Probably not. The economic development chapter that we just did, it's about 12 pages long, as you'll recall, it has four or five goals and two or three policies that go with each goal. Simple, direct, prioritize, provide some real guidance, and that's the model that we're going to use for the rest of the plan. And part of the reason why we don't want to or think we need to reinvent the wheel is because we have been working on implementing the plan that we have, urban village plans, for example, changes to our codes, changes to the way the permit center does business. Those are implementation activities and we would like to keep doing that stuff instead of reinventing the comp plan. So we will have a number of staff devoted to the comp plan over the next few years, but we also want to have people continue to work on those implementation activities, implement the plan, implement the goals and policies in the plan, keep doing those activities. Tara and her group are going to be working on implementing the things that we said we were going to do in the waterfront and in Old Town. Those are the kind of things that we want to keep doing. So we don't want to have our entire staff working on, for two years, on a new plan. And we don't think that's what we need. So that's the, that's the, those are the recommendations that we're going to be making to council. We have briefed them on this a couple of times in the past, I'm pretty sure they're on board with this, but we want to give them a chance to give us a final head nod before we really dive into this over the next two years, almost two years to the day. We have to be done with this.
Yes, sir. Mr. Brown.
Go ahead. So, being a wild-eyed environmentalist here, I'm wondering what, how sustainability...
Microphone, please.
Sorry, sorry, here we go. Forgot completely. So, I'll dispense with the way I started and basically just say that I am curious about how sustainability ranks within the overall comp plan planning framework and if there is actually a sustainability framework for evaluating some of the decisions for transportation, infrastructure, and housing density, and UGA incorporation and all that sort of stuff.
Great question. There are some things that have changed since we wrote the current plan in the early 2000s. Sustainability is one of those things that you don't see addressed very much in the current plan. Historic preservation is another issue that we know we need to address. There have been some changes in the state law and the GMA with regard to critical areas. Those are some things we know we need to address. We have to have goals and policies around the airport and prohibiting land uses that conflict with the airport operations. So there are a number of areas where there will be some new stuff and sustainability is one of those areas.
Well, I guess I'm curious about at what point that gets discussed because as we've seen in some of the recent things that we've reviewed, there are internal conflicts between how you prioritize or value sustainability versus historic preservation, for example. And there are real conflicts and people have different policy preferences for where they want to go with that and that's a discussion I would think that we would want to have before you get too far down the planning process. And I don't know what council's done, I mean, in turn of that, I don't know what kind of discussion they've had, but it seems like that's a core discussion of the framework for evaluating comp plan chapters and recommendations and I'm just kind of curious how that works out, I guess, or if anybody else is interested in it.
Well, we'll make some suggestions with respect to sustainability, but I'm not sure that you're going to resolve the conflicts in the comp plan. I think you're going to have policies that suggest that sustainability is important and that historic preservation is important and it will be on a case-by-case basis where we will evaluate those policies and you will get to help the council decide in this particular case which is more important. But yeah, that will be part of the discussion of the land use chapter and I'm sure we will have a sustainability section that will be new, that you get to help us formulate.
So how much staff effort is going to be pushed into this, like 50%?
No, it will be primarily, well, from our department, it will be primarily three people working pretty much on this for the next two years, myself and Lisa and Moshe. We will bring in the environmental folks when we need them, we'll bring in the transportation planners, the parks planners, police and fire will be involved. When we start talking about the capital facilities chapter, that involves every department in the city. So we'll be bringing in staff from police and fire to help us with that. We've got to figure out, you know, how many cops we're going to need, how many firefighters we're going to need, are we going to need new fire stations? All that stuff is part of the planning effort. So there will be a number of, I mean, I can't quantify it for you except to say that there will be probably three of us who will be doing not much else over the next two years.
Okay, I hope you've got a sharp red pencil for your editing.
We plan to do that, yes, yes.
Greg, when you're talking, I agree with you when you're talking about the chapters, you know, they don't obviously all need to be rewritten, a lot of them are working well. You know, obviously, we've talked about condensing would be a big goal to try to, using the economic chapter as kind of a guide, but you know, the environmental chapter has 48 different goals and policies or something like that, you know? I know that was recently adopted, that was one of the ones that maybe looked at. It was pretty expansive. My question on UGA, you know, if the city wants to make changes through this process to the urban growth area, areas that are in or out, can they do that unilaterally? Or do you need to involve, does county need to be involved with that?
Yes. County, the county actually sets the urban growth boundary. It's not a, we recommend, we make recommendations. So we'll say, "Take this part out, add this part, we need this, we don't need this." Ultimately, the decision is up to them. It's one of the things of GMA that it authorizes county to set cities' urban growth area boundaries.
So then you'd make recommendations that would go to county council, be voted on? And they can modify or just say it stays the same, they can make complete changes?
Yes.
And that's a part of this process as well?
Yes. And all the cities are doing that, yeah.
That's an interesting question. So what if we, as a community, decide we're going to accommodate the projection of population one way, whether it's not having expanded UGAs and through more density in our current boundaries, or we want to annex or put this area in the UGA and then they, at the county level, don't give us what we've asked for? Does that come back, is that in the middle of the process? So then we would have an opportunity to go, "Okay, how do we fix this within our own plan?"
Yeah. Yep, that's the way it worked last time. We recommended some changes, the county didn't agree, they get the final say, ultimately we have to revise our plan to be consistent with theirs. So, yeah, it is an iterative process and the, I mean, we've tried to start earlier this time than we did last time because last time it drug out past the, past the GMA deadline. It's entirely possible that that could happen again.
Are there, are there any time limits that, you know, through the Growth Management Act or state law that mandates how long a UGA can be, or an area can be in the UGA and not be annexed?
No.
They could just sit there forever?
The assumption is that you're going to annex them in the 20-year period. But as you know, or maybe you don't, I don't know, we don't totally control when areas get annexed, especially areas that are developed.
Sure.
We have some areas like Geneva, for example, that's almost fully built out.
Utilities, everything.
Can't annex the area without the permission of the people. They have to petition to be annexed. We've met with them over the years a number of times, they're not interested. So, you know, we could recommend to take it out of the UGA, but that forecloses the option of annexation then in the future. If we, if they suddenly decided, "Yes, we do want to be in the city, we want to have, you know, urban levels of police and fire protection," for example, you know, it would be, well, then they got to get back in the UGA, that's going to take a year, then annexation takes, I mean, it complicates things if property's not in the UGA. So that'll be one of the, there are a number of those areas that we're going to have to wrestle with this time, what to do with them, because we know they're not interested in the annexation, yet they're still in our UGA, so what are we going to do? And Geneva's one of those areas.
Ollie.
We recommended to the council that we take a higher percentage of population. I can't remember if that was sometime last year, right? And then...
It was earlier this...
Was it earlier this year?
Yeah.
And the council then passed on the same recommendation, right?
Yes.
So what happened at the county level with that? Did they give us back what we asked for? Okay.
They approved it.
And then I have one other question, which is on, it sounds like you guys are talking about public participation Monday. What do you think that's going to look like in terms of, like, you know, forums and noticing and that kind of thing?
Yeah, we expect that, because we're not reinventing the wheel, we are not planning to have a big community-wide sort of goal-setting process like Visions for Bellingham or something like that. We don't have the time, we don't have the resources. We, in the past, when we've faced these update requirements, we've gotten money from the state to help offset the costs and we've used that money for a number of things, but one of the things we used it for was that kind of a public participation process, the Visions for Bellingham thing in the 90s. We don't have that this time and we don't think we need it, quite frankly. We think the goals and policies that we have are still appropriate. We've been adding to the plan over the years, the environment chapter, the economic development chapter. And so we're not planning a big community forum type thing, we will have some open houses. It's hard to get people to come out for those kind of things because you're not talking about necessarily what's going to happen on the property next to them, you're talking about, you know, high-level goals and policies and it's hard to get people to come out to that kind of thing. But we will have an open house or two, we will have perhaps a focus group or two if we need them. We'll have the website, we'll have a Facebook page, we'll have opportunities for people to weigh in throughout the process. We'll have, we'll use the established advisory groups, so the Transportation Commission, Parks Board, Historic Preservation Commission, Arts Commission, Planning Commission. We use those folks to review all of the chapters that are relevant to their areas and we'll have lots of public hearings and work sessions.
Would we get to the UGA portion and making recommendations? Is there any way that, and it doesn't have to be a work session, you know, here, but I'd be interested to know more of what the financial impact is, you know, and what is, what does it mean to have an area annexed or non-annexed, or in a UGA or not in a UGA? What does it mean for the city when you're looking at available land to have in the UGA? What is the benefit to having or have not? I mean, that would be key, I think, in analyzing and making a recommendation.
Yeah, yeah, that'll be part, that'll be, that'll be part of the analysis. We're not going to have, it's not going to be at the level where we're going to have numbers, "Well, this area will cost so much over the next 20 years." But we will identify if an area needs, you know, water and sewer, if there are major road improvement projects that are going to be needed, if police and fire can serve it, or if we're going to need a new fire station if we take this area in, we'll do that, that level of analysis. So you'll have a good idea of, you know, whether, you'll be able to look at the different areas that are possible that we might add or take out and say, "Well, this one makes sense from a financial standpoint because the roads are pretty much there, water and sewer is there, we can serve it," or this area, obviously, it needs big road improvements, if it was going to be developed, urban densities, we need a fire station. I mean, you'd be able to, to do at that level, do that analysis at that level.
How about like fees? I mean, I live in the city, so I mean, if I lived in a UGA, which is outside the city, do I pay, you know, the $200 a month for stormwater and sewer?
That's the kind of analysis that we do at the annexation stage. We actually look at, when an area applies to annex, we actually look at the, and we put numbers to it, the financial impact of both on the city, what it's going to cost to serve the area, the revenues that we can expect for property taxes or other taxes if it's commercial and industrial property, and also the cost to the people who live there, what's going to happen to their, you know, water and sewer and property taxes and so forth. So that's part of the analysis that we do at annexation, we get down to that level of detail. And we've just, FYI, we found that generally it's cheaper to live in the city than it is to live in the county in terms of the taxes. People always, people tend to look at me funny when I say that, but it, the numbers bear it out.
And density, I guess, you know, density, available density in a UGA is important too, you know, because in a, like in a watershed area where development's getting, you know, harder to do, you might have undeveloped properties, but the likelihood of developing it is really low. So, I mean, that's, you know, part of the analysis too.
Questions, comments? Thanks for listening, appreciate it. We will report back to you what the council ultimately decides. Like I said, we've updated on this a couple of times, pretty confident that they're comfortable with this approach and they're going to give us our marching orders to go ahead.
Want to reinvent the wheel?
No, no.
When do you think these meetings, accelerated meetings will start?
For the planning commission? Probably not until next year.
That's next calendar year?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, there'll be some work this fall, but the majority of the work will be in 15.
Great, thanks, Greg. Now, acting director Greg, is there a director's report? You got nothing? Anybody else have anything for the good of the order? Nothing, okay, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.